Okay, thank you very much. We'll have a very abbreviated meeting this evening. We will handle a couple of the informal applications. We do not have a physical forum here as required by law, so we cannot take any actions tonight. The agenda will be abbreviated. There are some extension items on our agenda. We will be unable to take those. We will be unable to take minutes for those who are playing at home. That's a real disappointment, of course. And then we will be unable to adopt our 2024 schedule. But we can here at least, with the courtesy of those who've come down here with their applications, to at least hear them out. And unfortunately, we can't schedule them for a public hearing or take other action, but we can hear them. So the first one that we have on our agenda is Panetti to Main Street, Kisco Park. This is an application for a site development plan approval, an application for a preliminary subdivision approval stormwater management erosion and sedimentation control for construction of new single-family residence.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm Ralph Alfonzetti. I'm the engineer for the project. I can pull up my screen if that's okay?
Yeah, perfect.
Mr. Chairman, while the applicant is pulling up their screen, I want to just inform you that the Chico Central School District representative has left the meeting.
Yeah, no, we heard. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so as was noted, this is right now a single-family, one house on this property. We're looking to subdivide it for two building lots, leaving the existing house. There is an existing wetland in this area where my cursor is. The existing house is here, pretty close to Main Street, and the existing septic is right behind the house. Our proposal is to subdivide it as this plan shows with a pathway line right here where my cursor is, hops in this location, conforming to the setbacks, septic in this area, and we have some stormwater in this area here where my cursor is now. I kind of jumped into this. I know there was another consultant architect, I believe, that was doing the subdivision. I kind of took it over, but I did get everyone's memos, and I didn't see anything in there that is major, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, correct, yeah. Sabrina, do you want to run through your points in your memo?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has greatly improved since the last time this application appeared before your board. It is still a type-two action, so there's no need to go any further with it. The Environmental Quality Review Act supervised plans do indicate the correct zoning district, but we have not received any new applications. We should be correcting that in the application material. My third comment is regarding the coverage calculations worksheet. There are both lots are within coverage, but among buildings coverage and the minimum development coverage, so or the maximum allowable, I should say. So there's no issues there. A couple, there's one addition that I had to the zoning conformance table, and that is to include the width at the front lot line, incorporate that seventy-five foot into that zoning conformance table. It would be helpful. And you know, the only, I really had no other issues from a planning perspective. I would defer to both Bob Sealy and Dennis Corelli in regards to their areas of specialty. I have no objection setting a public hearing for this at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Bob, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Go over them quickly. Stormwater comments are breaking down. ST1 is basically additional soil testing is required. Also, two, there is additional areas of impervious, which they should take up and incorporate into the plans, which is ST2. ST3 and ST4 basically just additional storm events that should be incorporated into the SWIP for the one-year, ten-year, twenty-four-hour storm event. Basically, ST5 and ST6 are just minor technical alignments that should be incorporated into the plan. They should be stamped and signed. ST7, they should submit a stormwater management application along with a fee of five hundred dollars. ST8, basically, obviously, this is more than five thousand square feet of disturbance, so it's going to need a New York State DEC SWIP as well. And I have general comments. Basically, GC1 is stopping site distances. They should show along the roadway, the entrance, to make certain they can meet the required stopping site distance for the posted speed of twenty-five mph. Also, two, GC2, they should provide the minimum separation distance between the drainage and the on-site wastewater treatment in accordance with Westchester County. GC3, there's two retaining walls, one on the north side, one on the south side, and the driveway, which requires structural calculations and sections as well. And GC5 are just general notes I like to see on every plan which we go its water service connection. And also GC6, the pavement replacement should include standard details that we have in Chapter 109, which we outlined A, B, C, and D. GC7, basically just general notes. It's a standard note that should be put on the water service. Everything really, believe it or not, has to be looked at and approved by the DPW, the water service lines. And then GC8 is the driveway profile has some technical comments that I indicated on that A, B, C, and D. GC9 is going to be the street opening permit. And obviously, they should provide a subdivision map prepared by the New York State P O S, reviewed by the planning board, and provide copies of the on-site wastewater treatment system as approved by the Westchester County as well. And those are my comments for tonight on this application, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alfonzetti, any issues or problems with any of those? Any questions on the town engineer's comments?
Just one quick question. Bob, you mentioned the septic system approval for the lot, but I don't have to get septic system approval now. I just have to show the ones viable. Put some of it.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. But you are on the subdivision. On the subdivision map, you show the standard table, which has all your deep test data.
Correct.
On itself, make certain that's incorporated onto the subdivision map.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Dennis, you have some comments?
Yes, thank you.
You have to speak up, you're really far away.
So the applicant did do an update of the original delineation in 2010. It was over the summer, so that means 137-5B for delineation within twelve months of filing the application. When I originally went out there in February, and I still felt the same when I went out in October, I just think, I don't know, Ralph, if maybe you can move your cursor to the three flags that I'm talking about on the, what was the utter there, six, seven, and eight? I included the photos this time around because those are the same pink flags that I dropped back in February. They bump out that area slightly. I don't know, I pasted, it's maybe ten-feet-ish, tall-feet-ish. It's just that I think that section of the wetland is just a little bit bigger, so I just wanted to get those resurages so that that's accurate. And my focus was probably more the existing septic at the time. Got a copy of the plan versus what was proposed. I'm not sure if that order would not even maybe touch a wood guy rail, but I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate. So that was one of my comments with respect to the wetlands. And I know I've asked this employer comments just from looking at the site from being out there. I think you're going to end up removing at least one tree possibly, and others are kind of close enough that, you know, we probably would love to try to institute some forms of protection during construction just to, you know, if you're looking to keep those, to try to preserve them as best we can. So that, I haven't really seen anything of all the submissions to this point regarding the trees, so it would be nice to even get confirmation that you're not removing any trees, or if you are, just, you know, submit the tree removal permit application. We can get, you know, started on that as well. And those are my comments, thank you.
So we've contacted the surveyor. He's going to update those three flags, and he's also going to locate the trees on the proposed lot.
Okay, do you think tree, I mean, have you seen it? I mean, do you feel at least one tree is coming down, for example?
There may be one. That's why we're going to have them out there and just get them and people know, show them.
Okay. All right, perfect, thank you.
Great, okay. Any comments, thoughts? Dick, any thoughts, comments? Okay. If not, we, the only issue that we had was whether or not a tree application had to be filed, otherwise we were going to be set to be scheduling this for a public hearing, so we'll try to do that the next time we meet. Just going to be what the
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, just before Thanksgiving, okay. So anyway, if you could attend to those notes that we have from Bob and Dennis, we can try to move this along for you as quickly as we can. And go from there. Thank you very much. It's a much improved application.
So the next meeting, I'd come in and then advance when we would schedule for the next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Apologies again for not being implemented this afternoon.
Okay, I'll answer, Bob.
So the next item we have is the Ryzerzki Drive district and Kumar, fourteen and ten Oakdale Lane. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plan approval for a lot line change, adjustment.
Excuse me, my name is Dawn Portman from the Law Firm of Applicent Associates. President, the applicant, the Eric Razer's team, or full trust. And as the chairman said, we are asking the board consider a lot line change and subdivision approval. This is a property that was developed in the early seventies, and the, we believe the developers did a property swap that was not reported early nineteen seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two to accommodate the septic field on Lot Four, which is the property of Ryzerzki. If I can pull up his map, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, you see here, this is the lot owned by Ryzerzki's, and Lot Three is owned by applicant Kumar. This is the existing tax code lot, and the dark lines indicate the existing legal property line. And we believe that it was done to accommodate the septic field located on Ryzerzki property. This property swap does not result in any new lots and does not result in any change in the area of the properties. There is a, an issue with some out-of-possession fence. It's two point six feet, and a little piece of the driveway of Ryzerzki here is one point nine feet. And the parties have agreed that the Ryzerzki will to be a little bit in the property of their, of their lot. I get, that's exactly what we're asking for, is for that they, that the tax code lot goes to, so that we can ourselves look at power descriptions. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Portman, do you have the survey with colored lines on it?
I do.
I think it would be helpful for the board to see that since there are colors showing the difference.
Sure. I apologize. Hi, got unused tabs here. Just one second. There we go.
Thank you.
So this is the Ryzerzki property Lot Four, and this is the Kumar property Lot Three. This is the existing tax code lot, line here, and the colored lines indicate the property boundaries.
And have these lots been essentially used in this manner by the neighbors?
They have, they have. Nothing has changed on these properties since the properties were constructed and developed in early nineteen seventies. There was a variance granted for the construction of a pool on Lot Four and trash car on Lot Three. All that was done in the seventies as well. So the properties have existed in this condition since the nineteen seventies.
Okay. Sabrina, you got some thoughts?
I did, you know, just to reiterate, the deeds filed regarding these two properties reflect a lot line change. It's the map that does not. So this is an attempt to bring the map to be inconsistent, to be consistent with the deed filing. It's a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I think it's important to note that these lots predate the town's building coverage requirements, but they are in the maximum allowable building coverage. The development coverage, you know, they predate development coverage, and they are outside of development coverage limits. So just to kind of clarify, if any work is to be done on these lots in the future, they would need to do development coverage variances.
That's interesting.
Um, I think it's important to note that there's a small portion of the Ryzerzki driveway and the final fence that does encroach into the Kumar lot. That should probably be, the fence should probably be relocated in the driveway, should probably be removed so that there's no encroachment across the lot line. But I leave it up to the applicant to address that however they need to address it, or get an easement from the neighbor to allow that to happen. And that's all my comments. I don't have any problem with this going to public hearing.
Right, as normally.
So this is, sorry, this is Rohit Kumar, the owner of the other, signing like the other property. So I think, just want to put it on record that it's been agreed then is those improvements that were mentioned, we can move the six months.
Okay.
That's correct. We've agreed between the parties to have those adjustments moved.
Okay.
And I also have a question if I may. Sabrina, what was it that you said about any future development? I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
So the town today is of the nineteen nineties instituted what we call coverage limitations. So there are separate coverage requirements for all buildings, and there are separate coverage limitations related to development on the lot. So if you were to put additional buildings or recreational things on your lot, or walkways, or patios, or terraces, you would need to apply for a building permit and then fill out a coverage calculation worksheet. You would most likely be over the development coverage limitations that are allowed under today's standards. But it only comes into effect if you're doing new things on your property.
Right, okay. So fill the, like a building permit and give a coverage worksheet if anything new is needed.
Correct, yes.
Understand, understand. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any questions? Well, Dick, any questions on this? Normally, we were really going to try to accelerate this for you and get you to a public hearing, get you out of here, because we understand that you have a sale pending, but we can't do that this evening.
Do, I certainly appreciate that.
So we'll schedule for the next meeting, and
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I know you can't make an action to do it, but as the director of planning, I wouldn't want to aggravate the board, but we could possibly draft up a resolution to send to you guys for consideration without an action.
Yeah, I, um, so, but we can't schedule a public, we still have the public in December.
You, no, you, you, no, it'll be, you can't schedule the public or whatnot, but at least we might be able to
Sure, I'm fine, yeah. You can do that.
I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you, Sabrina.
Yeah, and I can also speak with council that maybe we can, we can make a decision to, to, because we typically put lot line changes on for a public hearing their very first
Right.
appearance, and so maybe there's some leeway for us to do that for the next time this is on.
Yeah, I was surprised that it wasn't already scheduled for a public stormwater.
Well, there was some, there was some, some issues in regards to the, on the applicant's part that we didn't want to rush it to public hearing unless we had everything tied up from the applicant.
Okay.
So, but we, all of that's been tied up.
I thought so too. Then it's all, huh?
I'll work, yeah, I'll work with council after the meeting and see if we can do something.
Okay. We'd like to try to accommodate you so we can. It's usually just a necessary thing.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we'll drop off.
Bye.
Thank you so much.
Our next application is Piccolino, and
Before we move on, I just have a question. I'm Eric Razerzki, I'm the son of
Oh, sure, sure. As long as you can, I don't know. Kind of unofficially.
So when you say that it's going to be a public meeting, and that could be in January, is that going to be the next meeting?
No, no. The next meeting, we hope we can actually negotiate this, so it will be a public hearing the next time we meet, which is in two weeks, actually less than two weeks. And so that we'll have a public hearing. Assuming that there are not going to be throngs of people who are interested in this application, we'll probably close the public hearing. And if we have the resolution prepared, we should have the resolution adopted next time around, which means you're done with us.
Wonderful, thank you.
Most people say that.
Yes, thank you very much.
No thanks, but thank you.
Great, okay. So that's, that's what we're trying to do, and we would have been able to do that if we had, you know, if we had the problems we have tonight. But anyway, okay?
Very good.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Ralph. You did consideration.
Okay, next application is Piccolino, fifteen Little Pine Road. Application for a site development plan approval for relocation of the clearing grating limit line to construct an in-ground swimming pool.
Good evening, I'm back to this one. Again, I'm going to share my screen to show you the map here.
Yeah.
I think it should be up. Everyone can see that? So I'm going to hopefully get my dates correct. I believe this lot received site plan approval in two thousand and four. I believe the planning board back in nineteen eighty-eight did a clearing grating limit line on this plant, on this lot. I zoomed in there. So this lot has an existing house on existing driveway. I believe at some point, there was a single-family house on this lot that burnt down somewhere around nineteen ninety-three, year two thousand, somewhere in there. I don't know the exact date. But this lot received site plan approval in two thousand and four, and there's a clearing grating limit line that goes right through this. I'm going to call it a terrace. It's essentially a very flat lawn area. It's surrounded by stone retaining walls. Obviously, it was previously disturbed. And we are proposing to remove the clearing grating limit line around the existing wall so that this area can be used for a pool. And maybe start to mine. So the existing line cuts the area right here, as you can see from my cursor, and we're looking to move it around this area here. Again, this area was previously disturbed. It's always been disturbed. It's been graded. We're not changing the grade of it at all. We're basically going to dig a hole, put a pool in. And I think that's it. It's as simple as that for me. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And Sabrina, your thoughts?
Okay, keeping it form with everything else tonight is a type-two action in accordance with CER. The application is actually zoning compliant and each required setbacks and building and development coverage. The change in the clearing grating limit line that the applicant has requested, you know, what he's saying is true. That stone, the stone wall that is reflected on the plans has been there going back to the seventies. It is amazing that at the time the subdivision was created, that clearing and grating limit line was drawn clear across the backyard. So I have no issue with the applicant shifting the clearing and grating limit line. It makes sense given the historical use of the property. You know, and then that's really old. I don't even think in this instance that any type of mitigation would be required due to the change in the clearing and grating limit line because the lot has been a lot in this, in this development status in regards to where the stone wall is since the seventies. So, that's all my comments. I have no, I have no matter, no problem if, when the next time the board can make a decision that this goes to public hearing.
Yeah, thank you. Bob, you have some questions or issues?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Based on my review of Westchester County G I S, municipal tax parcel view for the years two thousand seven to twenty-one, it appears the applicant had put in a terrace after the implementation of the stormwater rules and regulations. They put in approximately about, it's about twenty-three hundred and fifty square foot terrace, and then they added a pool, so there's about thirty-one fifty square feet, which all exceeds the stormwater regulations of new and previous, this is what I'm saying. So now they have to retrofit terrace and the pool and implement new stormwater regulations. So that's what they have to do for ST1. And because of that, they have to submit a completed stormwater management application and a fee. Then I have two general comments. The applicant is proposing to amend it. If the planning board is inclined to approve it, they would have to get a clearing and grating limit line declaration and an associated map as well to memorialize what they plan on doing. So in the future, owners are aware of it in the future when they do purchase the property, if they sell it. And then GC2 are just general notes that apply to the plan that are put on pretty much every site.
Right, notes.
Notes, and that's all I have.
Okay. Dennis, you had some thoughts?
Thank you. Yeah, I echo Sabrina. I think I was able to make it out in the nineteen forty-seven area, apparently, at the wall in the back.
That's a blip, huh?
Right, and you know, I'm not a construction history person, but it would be interesting for someone to look at that wall and tell me when they thought it was built just based on the materials, because of course it looks nothing like, you know, any of the walls today. So, you know, I wouldn't even know if I was out there in my role with the town and somebody said, gee, where am I supposed to stop mowing my lawn in this courtyard to honor this line? I mean, it, it serves no purpose, so that's why I'm, I have no problem moving it to follow the outline of the wall either.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. So again, this would be normally something that we would move to a public hearing for our next time. So I guess we will schedule it for a very quick, continued informal next time, and then take the action just to set it up for a public hearing through December. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm a little confused, Sabrina. The property has a lot of hard, you know, road and bricks and things like that, and that counted. But why, why does the, that allow that a pool be put in if the original stuff is over or at the new limit?
It's not, there is no exceedance of coverage here. This lot is much bigger than the area that you're being shown right now. Most of it is actually in a conservation, is conservation land.
Okay.
So, so what you're seeing, the development on the lot does not, um, um, reach, go over the maximum allowable coverage.
It's not more than just the lot. It looks to be almost four acres or so from the picture.
Yeah, all right.
I believe it's just about six.
Six, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's six point zero one acres.
Okay.
This, where my, where my cursor is, this is the conservation easement. So everything outside of that is conservation easement. Which involves, you know, including the, including the, out of outside our area to ingrate. So yeah, it's a pretty small area that we're developing, we're developing.
Yeah, and that stone wall really is a historical barrier, if you will, in regards to disturbance, so.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. So I don't think there's any additional, do we need additional materials for the next time around? Well, you need the, the, yeah, the stormwater, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the stormwater, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So do you have enough time to get that in for Bob? Maybe we should do this then for the December meeting, once? I'm sure we're past the date for submission for the next meeting, right?
Well, I think it's Well, I think as as soon as uh Mr. Alfonzetti can get the information, it's actually accordingly.
Schedule the informal, okay.
Yeah.
What what is the deadline for the next meeting?
Was.
It it passed already.
Oh.
The next deadline is Monday for um for the December fifth meeting, but I think that we're hoping you could get this in before the next meeting on November twenty-first.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Super.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night.
All right, thank you. All right. So that wraps it up for what we can do this evening, right? Were you here for something else?
I'm done, thank you, goodnight.
Good night.
Well, we can't take any action, we don't have a physical forum here. So you were here for uh Westchester Papers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, as we explained at the beginning, we can't take action because we, this is sort of like a, you know, undercover type of meeting we're having today. So we can't take actions because we didn't have a physical, a physical forum here. So what we'll do is this will be on the next agenda. Um and um, you know, this is very bad. All right, okay. So um I think we're set. Can we close the meeting? We can't take any more than closing the meeting.
Actually not, you couldn't open any jingle.
So, this is great. Less work, okay. Very good. All right, thank you.